I call the order, the July 28th meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. Welcome everyone joining us today here in the council chamber, as well as those watching or listening through Oshkosh Community Media Services. We are happy to have citizens participate in their city government in any way, so welcome to all. At this time, I would like the city clerk to take your roll call.
Herman?
Here.
Peck?
Here.
Pansky?
Here.
Stepanik?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Present seven.
I would ask council member Herman to lead us invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
We are mindful of the blessings and liberty that we have in this nation. May our decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have a proclamation that is declaring August of 2015 Civility Month. Whereas the city of Oshkosh is known as a friendly, welcoming community that serves as a destination for many due to its status as Wisconsin's event city, and whereas Winnebago County offers an exceptionally strong quality of life that attracts individuals and organizations to live, work, study, and enjoy the beauty of our immediate surroundings, whereas the Oshkosh Civility Project founded in 2010 is based on the work of Dr. P. M. Forney in his book, Choosing Civility, and whereas on June 14, 2011, the Oshkosh County Council adopted Resolution 11-270 declaring its support for the Oshkosh Civility Project and incorporated its principles into the council's operating rules, and whereas the Civility Project has been active and engaged in community, regional, and broader efforts to promote understanding and awareness of how communities' communication patterns impact others, and whereas the Civility Project is supporting an initiative during the month of August 2015 to advance the cause of civility and the shared understanding of the importance of our actions and conduct. Now therefore, I, Steve Cummings, Mayor of the city of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim that the month of August 2015 shall be known as Civility Month in the city of Oshkosh, that people are encouraged to reaffirm the principles of the Oshkosh Civility Pledge, which states, "We build a stronger and more diverse community by actively sharing our ideas and opinions with others in thoughtful and considerate ways. By practicing this basic commitment to civility, we learn and grow from one another, even in disagreement," dated this 28th day of July 2015. Mr. Scott or Mr. Schrader, would you like to accept the award and say a few things?
This will be fine. All right. Thank you, Steve. I think it was interesting that your invocation and the plaque say very much the same thing, that we're all interested in continually improving the quality of life in our city. And it's not that we are not civil, because we are, but we can always improve what we do. We've taken the, all the principles of civility from Dr. Forney's book and kind of made a calendar of them this month, and that's going to be on Facebook. And the encouragement is that people will take a look and kind of have their civility message of the day each day, and that will change. So hopefully, it will remind all of us to be more civil as to how we treat each other. Thank you very much. Earl?
No, go ahead.
That's it. Thank you very much, Steve.
At this time in the meeting, we'll move to citizen's statements to council. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes, must address items that are not listed in the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh and the common council, which may address them in the future meetings. It must not include endorsements of any candidates or any other electioneering. Please give us your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Gary Gray, 815 West Linwood. I would like to thank the city staff in putting on historical budget information on the city website for the 2016 budget process. I think it increases transparency and accountability of the city. Now, if this common council would actively promote increased substantial public input and participation in the budget process, we would have a great budget process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have consent agenda items. These items are those... Wait. Oh, sorry.
Justice Reimer, 2235 Brookview Court. Can some of you council members tell me why the mayor's breakfast was pushed back to, is it August 15?
It was moved to August 15 based on the recommendations of those who have been doing it for a lot of years, that they felt there were less and less EEA members coming. They wanted to focus it on more of a family event for the citizens of Oshkosh. So there will be a lot of kid activities, bouncy houses, face painting. We also wanted to tie it into the dustmacker tournament, as well as the farmer's market.
Is that why eggs are $3.29 a dozen?
Pardon?
Is that why eggs are $3.29 a dozen?
No, that's bird flu.
Then another thing, over on the 200 block on Parkway, I noticed the other day, how come the terraces aren't, they're a bunch of weeds, some grass. They look horrible. I know they put it in the street last year, that probably taxpayers expense probably $5,000, $6,000. You know, why is that?
Mr. Godey?
I haven't been by there recently to look at it. If there are weeds growing in the terrace, the property owners are responsible for maintaining the terrace after it was done. After the construction, it was...
Yeah, but it was...
...soiled, seeded, and erosion matted.
Was never touched?
It was never restored?
No.
I can have someone look into it. Do you have a specific address?
200 block on Parkway.
I will have someone look at it.
Okay, thank you. Bye.
Thanks, Dennis.
Can we now move on to the consent agenda items? I think I just read that. First is approval of bills presented by the finance director, receipt and filing of common council minutes in July 14, 2015, approval of cash report from June 2015, receipt of claims filed with city's insurance company, A. Garin-Gurkey, for alleged damages from a sewer backup, and B. William Nuland for alleged damages from a sewer backup. Resolution 15-353, approve granting easements to Northern Telecom and Data, Division Street parking lot, 500 block of North Main Street. This has been recommended by the plan commission that it be approved. Resolution 15-354, approve granting easement to Northern Telecom and Data in Williams Stagger Park and Carol E. Stagger Park. Again, plan commission recommends approval. Resolution 15-355, approve spotlight designation, authorize redevelopment authority to acquire 1208 Oshkosh Avenue. Redevelopment authority recommends approval. Resolution 15-356, approve developer agreement, lease agreement, assignment of lease to WEDA, approval on disposition to Rivers Phase II Oshkosh LLC, approve option to purchase parcel J by Northport Development Corporation, south side of Marion Road. Redevelopment authority recommends approval. Resolution 15-357, approve spotlight designation at 1118 South Main Street, former Buckstaff property. Redevelopment authority recommends approval. Resolution 15-358, approve initial resolution for special assessments, cold mixed asphalt paving, Fourth Avenue, Foster Street, Nebraska Street, and alleys. Resolution 15-359, approval of special event, Great Lakes Timber Professionals Association to utilize Sunnyview Expo grounds for their Great Lakes logging and heavy equipment expo September 8, 9, and 10, 2016. Resolution 15-360, approve special Class B licenses, Class B fermented malt and Class C wine licenses, and operator licenses. Are there any comments from the public on any of these items?
Do you want to point out?
I was, I see Mr. Davis standing in the wings, so basically, I direct you to Resolutions 15, 355, 356, and 357. Council understands this, but the two designations of spotlight, as well as the developer agreement, the lease agreement, and that, and we'll go from there.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
The first item, 1208 Oshkosh Avenue, that is the T end of where Sawyer comes into Oshkosh Avenue. If you recall, the city's been acquiring those blighted properties in that intersection to make some intersection improvements, some street improvements, better access to Rainbow Park, and redevelop that site. In that particular case, the property owner approached the city to sell the property about 50 percent of what their assessed value is, and the RDA said that would be a good idea to continue with the other purchases that we've made in that neighborhood, with the long-term goal to improve that neighborhood for traffic circulation, a gateway to the city, entrance to Rainbow Park, a lot of different reasons besides just the blight elimination.
One question before we move on?
Yes.
There's an apartment in this complex. Are we responsible for finding the tenant of that apartment a new location?
Currently, we only buy vacant properties, so while there may have been a tenant in the property, it can't be occupied when the city purchases it, because then the city would be responsible for relocation. The only condition we'd have for that is that we only buy vacant properties.
So we would request, if it is currently being run, that the current owner vacates the lease or whatever, so that there's no tenant in the property, correct?
I would have to research that and see what kind of agreement there might be, but the city's policy to this point is only to buy vacant properties.
Okay. Just the one photograph that shows it looks like it's occupied, so. Will you check on that?
Mr. Davis, do we have a long-term plan for this area at like roundabouts? Are we, because I know redevelopment was also mentioned in our material. I know the focus is on the redesign of the intersection, but I mean, there are other properties that are still there.
Yes.
So what is the long-term plan for this area?
The RDA's has a plan for the intersection improvements, and I'm sorry, I don't have a good visual to show you, but the northwest quadrant would be redeveloped for future commercial and possibly mixed use with commercial and residential. We use about the rest of the property for the street improvements, so there isn't too much reps right now would stay, then three properties would be redeveloped, and then the area to the west of those three could be redeveloped.
Some more to come.
Yes.
Thank you.
There's no other questions, I can talk about the next item then.
Resolution 15-356?
Yes, this is the property that's currently vacant between Rivers One, they're on Marion Road, and the Anthem Building that opened here in June. That property is about acre and a half, and the developer is proposing to build a Phase Two of the Rivers Senior Housing Project on that site. They can't use the entire site, because part of that site is contaminated to the point where it's too expensive to actually remove the material, so we're capping that with a hard surface, and that'll become public open space. The balance of the property will be a 40-unit multifamily building that will be similar in nature to the existing building that was, that was built just to the west. The other pieces of that regarding the WEDA, since WEDA's involved with the financing, it's a condition that they be able to assign the lease to them in case the developer doesn't finish the project, that WEDA can finish the project, because the city only leases the land until the, the building and all the capping is done, and then we can actually sell it once the DNR says we've met the requirements for capping that site. So we'll lease that until the construction is completed and DNR has approved the cap. And the last item is approving the option...
Alan, can I just ask a question regarding this Marion Road area? Has there been, I know Darren and I have spoke about this before, but has there been any thought of reconfiguring that intersection there on Jackson and Division? Since we are moving kind of towards Jackson there now on Marion, have we ever thought about making that a more even intersection?
My understanding is yes, the city has looked at that in the past, but not since I've been here for about the last five years.
Especially with more development now, I think that would be much easier, much more accessible. But I don't know if I had that on my mind since we were just speaking about it with Oshkosh Avenue, but I think that would be a good area of focus as well.
I will confer with Mr. Burridge and see what we've got for plans for that intersection.
I'd be happy to share with council, in fact, all of you, since Mr. Tower has retired, none of you were on the council at the time, and as I was doing my research for this position seven years ago, it was a very controversial issue about acquiring property to square off that intersection. It's quite ironic that the issue comes up. I just want to share with you that little bit of history.
They were going to buy the chamber building, right?
The idea was to purchase a chamber building, and council rejected that. I'm not speaking ill of any member here, because none of you were on the council at the time.
But I remember.
But that was, that was a very controversial issue that ultimately the council decided against, and then when the economy went south shortly thereafter, the whole idea of purchasing it and the whole development just kind of died on the grapevine, but you will likely get some calls from some people who were big advocates for that, and...
Give me a call.
They'll say, oh, anyway, I'm not going to get in the middle of that, because it may, who knows, it may come back to council another day, but that's kind of the history. If you were looking, you were probably paying attention to Mr. Davis, but as you were asking that question, you had a lot of smiles and anxiety attacks that were coming back from, from seven, eight years ago, because it was a very controversial issue. Thought I, there's Mark's history lesson.
Thank you.
Another question, Mr. Davis, on this, it also mentions that the city will cap the contaminate with park improvements. Is that going to move forward right away, the park improvements?
Yes, that'll be done in conjunction with the construction of the building, because the, the park improvements are part of the cap for that remediation plan.
Okay, and then with this, us holding the lease until the DNR issues the certificate of completion, there's no liability exposure to the city at all, is there in any of this?
I can't say there's no liability, but the city, RDA, has been owning that property for many years, so there's always been a chance for some kind of liability, but as soon as we sell this property, then the city and the developer has no more environmental liability. That's kind of the goal of the whole program through DNR.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I believe there's a question on 15-357.
And yes, the Buckstaff property. If you recall, you've already authorized staff to begin working on some grant applications for the demolition of the structures on the property. This blight designation is also needed for the grant applications, and I believe it's part of the settlement agreement that the city is working on up to this point. At this point in time, we're using it for grant purposes, and I think the, the blight designation is well warranted.
I think we all would agree.
This is to move...
Obvious was another word.
This is to keep moving the project forward.
Yes.
To get the building removed.
Correct. Another step on that staircase.
Staircase going up?
Yes.
Work share.
Yep.
Rickety.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One point of clarification, the budget, or excuse me, the agenda was amended slightly for Resolution 15-358. Nebraska Street was removed, that was a redundant street. We've already, council's already approved a resolution for Nebraska, so we, we took it away from the updated version that you received in your, in your packet tonight.
Okay, thank you. There is no further, no further questions or discussion? I will look for a motion in a second.
I would move for approval.
Second. I think it was already out there. I think the second.
Does that give us a third?
Sure.
Would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Stepanik?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Quid seven.
There are no items removed from the consent agenda, so we'll go on to pending ordinances. Ordinance 15-361, approve official mapping of Sawyer Creek watershed, 2700 block of Clairville Road, Town of Valgoma. Plan commission recommends approval. Are there any questions from the public? Take it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved? Second.
Mr. Godey, we have a map. Would you like to explain where this 2700 block is?
Certainly. The 2700 block in this, this location is located on the west side of Clairville Road, south of County Trunk Highway K or 20th Avenue, north of Highway 91. On the screen, you can just at the lower corner catch a glimpse of the railroad tracks cutting in an angle, so 91 is just off the screen. It is roughly from mid-block to the north to County Trunk Highway K is the location.
Okay, thank you. There's no further discussion? I will ask the city clerk to take the roll call.
Herman?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Stepanik?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Quid seven.
Next is ordinance 15-362, repeal and recreate a portion of the streets and sidewalks, ordinance, section 25-23, street to remain open to traffic during course of excavation. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Bring it back to the council for a motion?
So moved? Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to bring up, I think it's important that the citizens know what streets are in this ordinance. We're looking at West 20th Avenue, Oregon Street, Jackson Street, West 24th Avenue, Oakwood Road, Kohler Street, and Washburn Street, and I believe city staff and our information designated these as, as state highways and county roads have been transferred and lost to state highway or county road designations, that it was important to make sure that these primary streets throughout the city always remain open for traffic flow, even though they may be under construction at different times. So I think that's a, a good change to the ordinance and something I'll support.
There's no further discussion? Will the city clerk please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Stepanik?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Quid seven.
Next is ordinance 15-363, amend municipal ordinances related to license investigation and approval, the granting and issuance of alcoholic, alcohol beverage licenses. Are there any questions, comments from the public? Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second?
So moved? Second.
Discussion? Lynn, you want to explain exactly what the nuances are of this?
This ordinance is really just a cleanup of our current ordinance language. When we were going through the process of issuing the licenses and the, the annual renewals this year, we noticed that there were things in our ordinance that hadn't been kept up to date with state statutes and with our current practices, so this brings that all up to date. The proof of seller's permit is something that's required by statute. We just didn't have it in our ordinance, so we added that. We simplified the language related to the investigations by police, fire, and the health departments. If you read our ordinance very strictly, you could interpret it that we should either grant the license or completely deny it. We really didn't do that, because if somebody had something that was a minor issue on a health inspection or a fire inspection that they could easily correct, we were not recommending denial. We were having the council grant the license, and the clerk would just hold it until the, the issue had been cleared. So the language changes that you're seeing, just adopt that type of procedure for it to move forward. And then finally, there was a reference to a fee for wholesale beverage licenses. Those aren't issued by the city any longer, they're issued through the state, so the reference to the fee wasn't really needed in the ordinances any longer.
Okay, thank you. Any other further question? I'll ask the city clerk to take the roll.
Herman?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Stepanik?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Quid seven.
Now it's ordinance 15-364, amend Chapter 8 Hotel and Motel Room Tax Ordinance to reallocate room tax distribution, continuing 2% of the room tax dedication to convention center debt retirement, and amending the timing of payments of hotel and motel room tax. Any comments or questions from the public? Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second?
So moved? Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Roloff, do you want to explain a little bit about this for those who are listening?
Sure. This is a combination of things. One is, we have our revised agreement with the Grand Opera House Foundation, which eliminates from our agreement any tie of our contribution to the grand to the room tax, and that had been written into a formula. With that out of there, we needed to amend ordinance just, just at the surface to fix that. We had some discussions with the Convention Visitors Bureau and took a look at some of our capital needs, and recognizing all those things, we felt we needed to completely revise the room tax ordinance. What we had, what we had done over time was made a series of piecemeal decisions that made the formula so complicated, we needed a, an IRS tax accountant to figure it out for us. Fortunately, we had our finance director who could do that for us, and they've been doing it for years, all through all the finance directors. And I know that Mr. Herman, being on CVB board, was very interested in simplifying it, and we had a meeting with some CVB reps, and we really took a look at the historical allocation, and the CVB had been getting close to 60%. So we really rounded it to 60% that the CVB gets. Sometimes I got less, sometimes I got more, depending on how the formula was done. This simplifies it where they get 60% regardless. And then we allocate 20% to the city for operational costs associated with the convention center, so unlike some other communities, it's not like we're using it for general operations. We're using it for the convention center, and then we're also using it for some other costs associated with the convention center and other maintenance activities. The last 2% is used for convention center debt. What this does is this will free up this debt, this 2%, so that as we incur other debt for the convention center, we can dedicate this room tax, rather than general property tax dollars, to fix those things up. And provided that we have adequate debt to support, or to pay off, we can continue to support that. And really, all that does is take our ordinance and gets it aligned with what state statute is. So that, that's a very good thing. With this getting shuffled around, I think we can do a better job planning improvements at the convention center, as well as planning things that we can do that, that under our agreement with the hotel, we have some maintenance responsibilities over there. We'll be able to do those in a more proper fashion, more regular fashion. We'll be able to schedule things a little better. And then with all that, I believe we'll have adequate funds to take care of creating the position of special events coordinator that we've talked about for some time. And yes, Ms. Hubrig's over there with tears of joy practically. It has become more than just a paper processing thing of processing a license. It's become very detailed. And quite honestly, even the special events committee, which has worked very well, we're taking a lot of staff time out of more productive time to go to these meetings. We think that this person can address some of those issues even before they need to get to council for, for final approval. So a little more proactive, and we've had those discussions with the CVB. I think they're on board. They had a little hesitancy at first, but after we expressed, you know, what ideas we had, I think everybody saw a variety of wins that were going to happen here, so I'm very pleased with the, the outcome. I think Mr. Herman, he was smiling the day we, we walked out of the meeting, so I assume that that smile's still there with Mr. Herman. And so we've got that, as well as, we've got a pretty good obligation for maintenance things over at the convention center that come up periodically. We have funds set aside for that as well now, so it's really going to be a very positive thing. There's an agreement we have with the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation. A lot of people don't remember that the Community Foundation loaned us a million dollars towards the convention center. It was a $3 million project, they loaned us $1 million, and we are, I think Ms. Connolly Keesler told me one time that at the rate we were currently paying them, we would have it paid off in about 175 years. That does not make us a good credit risk, and we weren't paying, we really were effectively paying very, very little off. What this does is this commits us to get that paid off, and I think we need to support the Community Foundation for these types of things because their, their whole existence is about circulating the money through the community, not having it stuck in a City Hall IOU for 175 years, so we'll get that taken care of, we'll meet our obligations under that agreement, and so it's, there's a lot of things that are going to accomplish by, by, this is really an omnibus cleanup legislation for the, for the council tonight.
And I believe you indicated there might even be some funding left to invest in historic tourism.
And, you know, all those good other things that, that mayors want to have accomplished, I think we can use that person to help with that process. CBB's excited about it, I think we have resources here, but that person can help to the degree we have events that, that focus on that. I think we can use that position for, for a lot of things. We're going to get a lot of value with that position.
Right. Any further questions or discussion?
No, I just was going to say that I think a number of us are very excited about this, it needed to be done, it was well long overdue to have it simplified, and to Mr. Roloff's point, I know a number of us were concerned about making sure that the foundation got paid back, what we had in, what they had invested with the convention center. It just makes us for, for good neighbors, and also it sets up councils and city managers for better, better situations down the road.
Anyone else? Would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Stepanik?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Curate seven.
We have one new ordinance, and there'll be no formal action taken on this ordinance this evening, and it's ordinance 15-365, designate signalized pedestrian crossing on Oregon Street for the Riverwalk. We're now at council discussion and direction to city manager and future agenda items. Mr. Roloff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our second budget workshop is scheduled for August 26 at 5:00 PM in room 404. We'll be giving you some modeling of where we see both expenditures and revenues going as we're looking forward to give you a little preview of what we think what will happen once all the department budget requests are in. So that's, that's the only workshop we have upcoming, although the mayor did mention to me about a, I had mentioned to him that we were meeting with some residents in Middle Village to go over that, that new pocket park that's been constructed over there, had a very good meeting today, and the mayor mentioned, well, maybe when we, when the timing's right, have a dedication ceremony, so we're going to look for a time, maybe doing it around 5:00 on a council day, weather permitting, that you can go over there, and it's, it's wonderful facility. I think the neighbors were very pleased, we took care of little outstanding issues that were there, so hopefully we can do that in the future as well.
I drove past it this afternoon, looks very, very nice. I mean, the grass is starting to come up, it's just a very nice peaceful little area now, and one of our older neighborhoods.
Regarding the budget workshop, Mr. Gray, budget documents as they are prepared and presented to council will be posted on the website throughout the process, so we've already made that, that decision to do that. And that's all I have on that topic, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We're now at the second time for citizen statements. Again, what I read before, citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes, and must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh and which the council may address in future meetings, and must not include any endorsements, candidates, or other election area. No one wants to speak? City manager announcements and statements, Mr. Roloff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I placed a memo in your packet, but I think it, it bears discussion because it was somewhat of a controversial issue, if you may recall, from a couple weeks ago, Murdoch Avenue Road Reconfiguration. After it was sent back by council to the committee, staff has split the issue because one was under the jurisdiction of bike and ped, which was the bike lanes, where the bike lanes themselves, and the other one was what to do with the road reconfiguration itself, the, the road diet, as it were. At the Traffic Review Advisory Board, they unanimously recommended implementing the proposal, and they added that they would reevaluate it within two years. The only thing we'd be doing out there anyway would be paint. You can undo paint very easily even after two years. This does not require a legislative action, but because of the, the level of controversy that went on, I did not want to just simply let it slide and not mention anything. I think publicly, we need to let, let everybody know, but I'm going to follow the recommendation of the Traffic Review Advisory Board and instruct staff to, to put the three lanes in. There will not be a bike lane because that's under the jurisdiction of the Bike and Ped Committee, that does require council approval, so I'm not sure where the Bike and Ped Committee will go with that, but based on whatever input they provide, it may or may not come back to the council at this time, but I just wanted to let you know about that. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. If the first question is, when do you think it'll be done, my goal would be to have it done before school starts.
Just comment, as being the council rep on the Traffic Review Committee, the big concern of that committee again was having the bike, bike lanes on Murdoch with the amount of traffic that was there. At our meeting, good or bad, there were no citizen comments, no citizens came to that meeting, and there are none here tonight, so it's been noticed, so apparently whatever concerns they had either have gone away, or they've decided not to see if it works or not, and I, and it has gone through other committees. Obviously, the Plan Commission looked at it and, and recommended forwarding it and moving it forward, and as Mr. Roloff said, we're not changing the construction of the street where we're digging up anything or, or moving stop and go lights or changing anything other than striping it, and I've been down, up and down Sawyer the last couple days, and it seems to be working fine on Sawyer Street, so I think, you know, change is, is tough, and we, we all admit that, and so I think that once people get used to this, I think it will improve and hopefully it will reduce the accidents that we've been seeing at, in that section of Murdoch Street, so I'm going to support it.
There are none of your questions, that's all I have to report, Mr. Mayor.
Should we do a plug for the mayor's breakfast on that? The mayor's breakfast will be held.
Everybody get your shirts out.
Mine's on.
Yes, we neglected to put this on the agenda, but given the fact that you have your shirts and you want to do a commercial.
Scott has a little. Mine's in my briefcase already.
I mean, it came up in public comment earlier, we just, even though we'll have a meeting on the 11th, just everyone remember, Mayor's Breakfast, August 15, Leach Amphitheater, 7 o'clock.
11:00. Breakfast is $5, all you can eat. Why are you laughing?
Because that means we have to serve that much more.
That's right.
It's a good problem to have.
Indeed. Mr. Peck, it's your turn.
I would move to go into closed session. The council may convene into closed session pursuant to section 19.85, par. 1, par. 1C of the Wisconsin State Statutes to discuss the mid-year review of the city manager and employee over which the common council has jurisdiction and exercises responsibility. Second.
Will the city clerk please take the roll call?
Herman?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Stepanik?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Curate seven.
I need, now need a motion to adjourn in a second.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.